Yeah, they've just, yeah.
I guess I never looked.
The March 6th City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the approval of minutes. We have the council study session minutes of February 6th and the council meeting minutes of February 6th. Are there any comments or questions regarding those? Being done, they stand approved. That brings us to communications, petitions, and awards. And first of all, we have the introduction of Public Works Technician, Mr. Jack Brandenburg. Mr. Went.
All right, thank you very much, Your Honor. I told Mr. Brandenburg here, who's our newest Public Works Technician, that he had to give a brief 20-minute speech. And so I hope that you've prepared that on a public works topic.
I'll let you speak.
All right, yes, sir. Mr. Brandenburg has worked at Charles Hamilton since 1994. He was a general laborer, contract finisher, masonry foreman, and most recently, an equipment operator. He's done a good job assimilating into the Public Works Division, and so we're really happy to have him onboard. He's also a Vandelia resident, and we're just happy to have him here and thankful that he came in tonight so that you could put a face with the name.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. And you don't have to hang out. I appreciate you coming in.
Thanks.
All right, next we have a presentation on Plan for Health Miami Valley by Martin Kim.
Sorry, we don't have a clicker for you on this system, and so I've got it right here.
Okay, so I'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, members of the council, city manager. My name is Martin Kim. I'm the Community and Regional Planning Director with the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. I'm here today to give you a quick overview of a recent study that we have completed under the Plan for Health Miami Valley Initiative. So just give you a quick overview of Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, just in case you are not aware of. We are the voluntary association of government and non-government organization. City of Vandelia has been a long member of MVRPC. Thank you for being a longtime member. MVRPC staff, including myself, we do a lot of community and regional planning, a lot of land use, transportation planning activities. We also love maps. We make maps. We use maps to show the different trends and so forth. And we also do the environmental planning. If you are not familiar with MVRPC, we have great website, mvrpc.org, so I encourage you to take a look at our information. The planning started back in 19th century because of the rapid urbanization that took place with the Industrial Revolution. There has been a lot of population moving into the urban area, and then that created a hazardous housing condition. And planning started with a public health crisis. So understanding the intersection of planning and health and to improve health outcomes in the Dayton region, MVRPC launched a Plan for Health Miami Valley Initiative in March of 2021 with three goals. The first one is to promote and advocate health in all plans and policies. Second, convene and engage partners to improve conditions that are known to be key determinants of health. And finally, advance planning efforts aimed at creating conditions for healthy people and communities. So we have, the initiative is about two years old, and we have done quite a bit of work so far. And I'm going to show you one of the recent study. But before I do that, just to get you warmed up with this presentation or briefing, I'm going to start my briefing with a short story. Meet Brian Kim. Brian is a middle-aged business owner and lives in the city of Healthyville. Healthyville is a mid-sized city and has dynamic recreational opportunities, including extensive parks and trails where people can enjoy. On his birthday, Brian got a new smartwatch. I'm sure you all have smartwatch. As he starts to enjoy using this new watch, it reminded him an article that he recently read that says, "You will have a better health by walking just 10 minutes a day." "Yes, starting this month, I am going to stay active," said Brian. "My community has great recreational opportunities and amenities. From now on, I'm going to find time to go to the gym, go biking and hiking after work and on weekends." A month has passed, and Brian's smartwatch was ready to report back to Brian how well he did. Smartwatch said, "Brian, during the month of October, you walked seven miles, less than eight minutes per day, while drove over 1,000 miles," which is 159 times more than walking. Brian was shocked and realized that finding the time after work or on weekends to engage in physical activities had limitations and was not working. Active living isn't just about getting to the gym or going for a run. Active living is a way of life that integrates physical activity into everyday routine, such as walking to the store or biking to school or work. One of the effective ways to achieve better health outcome is by providing environments that support and allow for increased physical activities on a daily routine. A community where healthy active living choice is an easy choice will allow Brian Kim to stay active all day long instead of trying to find time to exercise during his busy schedule. That is the end of my short story, and here is my smartwatch. So moving on, I'd like to share some of the highlights from our recent study. It's called Built Environment Assessment. This assessment provides information using interactive maps and infographics and tells the story of our region's current built environment conditions for their ability to support active living in our neighborhoods and communities. So today, let me share some of the highlights. Just like the city of Healthyville, our region has great amenities to stay active and healthy. In our region, 82% of people have adequate access to locations for physical activity. However, 28% of our residents have indicated that they had no leisure-time physical activity. The physical and mental health outcomes reported by federal, state, and research institutions all reflect this lack of physical activity in our region. So the question we are asking is, as a community, as a region, how can we promote healthy living and integrate physical activity into everyday routine, such as walking or biking to the store, school, or work? Next slide. To answer this question, MVRPC has developed an active community index for the purpose of establishing a comprehensive baseline of how supportive an area's built environment is to active living. So I'm not going to go over all the details of how we constructed this active community index. Rather, I'd like to point out that we have classified our neighborhoods into five different classes. Very high indicated in dark color on the map, to very low, using white color, as you see on this map. As you can see from this map, we find that current conditions for active living in our neighborhoods and communities vary depending on where you look. Generally speaking, older communities are found to have built environments that better support active living than newly developed areas. By the way, this is an all-interactive map, so actually you can go in, zoom in, zoom out, just like a Google map. And you can click on the different places on the map, and it'll have all the data that we used pop up on your screen. So after active community index was mapped out, we conducted several analyses to gain some insight about our active living condition. The chart to the right details the fact that development patterns in our region have become less supportive of active living over the years. For example, 58% of development that took place in 1950s is found to have very high active community index score indicating good conditions for active living. On the other hand, for those development occurred during 2010s, only 2% had a very high active community index score. So we looked at places, our neighborhoods, in terms of our built environment. So next thing, the next analysis we conducted was, how about people living in those neighborhoods? We find that over 40% of population lives in communities with a very good active living environment. But at the same time, there are about the same number of people living in communities with poor active living environment. How about children, older adults, or people with disabilities, who are more vulnerable to environmental conditions? We find that the distributions are about the same for each population groups to the total population, but examination by neighborhood types revealed very profound differences between urban and suburban communities, especially for children, older adults, and people with disabilities. For example, 59% of children living in urban neighborhood are living in a good active living environment compared to just 14% of their suburban counterparts. Staying active at the individual level is important because it has many health benefits, right? But why should we care about creating an active living environment at the community level? Very simple. Active community is a livable community with better quality of life. Next slide. A healthy community, an active living community, do not happen by accident. We need to plan for it and build it. We need to enhance our built environment to support active living for all generations. Yeah, stay on that slide. Next question is then, where should we look into to enhance our environment? As part of the Built Environment Assessment, we have identified locations where built environment improvements would be mostly needed by cross-examinating the active community index and population distribution. So for example, on the image of Montgomery County here, areas that are the darkest purple color have a high population density but a low active community index score. So if you want to target areas for improvement, we encourage you to take a look at those purple areas marked with three stars because you will have a better return on investment, if you will, by having some improvements there. Again, this is all interactive. You can zoom in, zoom out. You can also change to the orthofoto, aerial photo underneath to see what it looks like out there. Next slide. Improving our community so that it supports better active living is not about providing only sidewalks and bikeways. Those are important infrastructure, no doubt. However, it's more than just providing missing links for the sidewalk or bikeways. Also, it's more than just maintaining those sidewalks and bikeways. We need to provide amenities and destinations well-connected and accessible through those And active living measures can be implemented not only in newly developed areas, but you can do the retrofitting when you do the redeveloping or redevelopment or in the established We can all support active living when we do these type of activities. Increase awareness about the link between physical activity and chronic illness. Provide safe environments for kids to walk to school. Provide missing links in sidewalk networks and so forth. I'm sure you have many different ideas how you can make your community a better community with more active living choice. I hope the information I share provided you today provides a good insight and better understanding on our region's current built environment conditions for their ability to support active living in our neighborhoods and communities. As I conclude my briefing tonight, I'd like to mention that creating environments that promote healthy behaviors and improve health outcomes in our communities require your leadership and commitment because improving health outcomes in our communities do not happen by accident. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kim? All right. Well, thank you very much for the very informative presentation. It was very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. They must have turned me down. All right, next we'll move on to the public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight on the agenda, the first one being for electric aggregation and the second being for natural gas aggregation. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Last fall, there was a ballot question on in town, and that was whether the City of Vandelia should be permitted to negotiate on behalf of its residents for opt-out electric and opt-out natural gas aggregation. That, of course, passed. The City of Vandelia has investigated many programs, aggregation programs, and suppliers. The recommendation that I've brought before you is that the City of Vandelia move forward with the program that is associated with Palmer Energy in the Miami Valley Communications Council. That's for both electric and natural gas aggregation. As part of that, we've had to hold and are required to hold two separate public hearings. And we held the last public hearing, the first set of public hearings, one for electric, one for gas, at the last council meeting. At this council meeting, we'll have the second public hearing, and if its councils will, there will be two separate resolutions on that will permit the City of Vandelia to enter into the natural gas aggregation program and the electric aggregation program. I do anticipate Ms. Hoffman of Palmer Energy presented at our last meeting. I do anticipate that she will be here. She has emailed me and notified me that she's caught in a meeting that has taken a little bit longer to get going. Having been through this before, I feel very comfortable answering the questions that you might have. And so that's the brief introduction for tonight. And so with that, I would just ask that you open up the hearing for each of those utilities.
All right. All right, so at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak or comment on the electric aggregation or the natural gas, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your Being done, I'll close the public hearing. All right, that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Your Honor, I'm sorry, I'll rise. I'll have to interject. We have two separate agenda items. One was a...
Can't combine them.
I would just like and have it be cleaner to hold the second public hearing, this one being for natural gas separately, if you may.
We will back it up and do... All right. So if anyone would like to make a comment on natural gas aggregation, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. My apologies.
All right. You look confused, Jerry. All right. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens.
My name is Cindy Dugan. I live at 794 Walt Smith Way in Vandelia. I think I was channeling a few of you today. I came to speak about the facility that is going into industrial way, I think it is. The Planning Commission did not think that this facility would be detrimental to residents' health and safety, and in some ways, I disagree with that. This area has a proximity to Route 40, which is already difficult at times to turn on to Brown School Road. I can imagine more trucks maybe coming for repair to that facility or for, well, they say not an overnight, but the proximity to Route 40 concerns me about accidents, more trucks. Trucking traffic would increase due to the truck maintenance portion of the facility. We have enough truck traffic on Brown School now. Residential areas will be affected by increased truck traffic. Citizens live all up and down Brown School Road, and they'll be hindered by the increased traffic of the facility. When the truckers find out that they can get their maintenance done at that facility, I can see them wanting to go more. I was also concerned about increased crime in the area due to the trucks and the materials stored inside the fence. There are already many thefts of property and car damage in the area. It seems to be increasing, from what I've seen. I do worry about that because there are going to be materials stored in some of these trucks, and it's going to be open season for somebody to go over the fence and do what they want to do. Mr. Arnold and Mr. Atkins had concerns about this at the Planning Commission meeting on February 28th about overnight stays. Again, they said that that was not going to be permitted, but things happen every day that aren't permitted. And truckers and overnight has a tendency to increase prohibited behavior, and I wouldn't want to see that in our area either. The fire department had concerns over hazardous materials. Some of the trucks stored overnight will remain loaded if there is hazardous material in any of them any time. That's a safety issue. No overnights were promised, but I'm not terribly optimistic about that. I question the applicant's answer to comings and goings of the trucks, the frequency of them. You know, they may say, "Well, we'll have one or two every two weeks," and it turns out to be three or four a week, five, six. I mean, who knows what it might develop into. There's a Metro Park entry, very close in that area. Truck traffic could be dangerous and may hamper the enjoyment of residents in the parks. Traffic increasing may affect the property values of residences close by, of which I am one. These are things the Planning Commission said would not happen, would not. I ask that further consideration be given to this use, if you would. There's a lot of people that live down Walt Smith, Hunter's Run, I mean, all over that area, so please just give it a second thought before you do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, being done, we'll move on to the city manager's report where we have some information items and an action item.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Just to put it out there, large debris drop-off starts Saturday, March 11th. That'll be from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Public Works Garage. Proof of residency is required. Also, daylight savings time is on March 12th, and so we will be setting our clocks ahead one hour, and sometimes we still have to do that manually. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention, we try to work very closely with the Ohio Department of Transportation. The District Seven Deputy Director, Randy Chevali, is retiring, and they've appointed Mr. Bud O'Brien of Miami County to take over as the deputy director. Of course, I think that Mr. Chevali has done a lot in the last couple of years to help us behind the scenes and to navigate ODOT and make sure that Vandelia's interests are being heard, and I anticipate that that'll continue with Mr. O'Brien. I'm pleased to report that the Dayton Development Coalition's Priority Development Advocacy Committee has included four of our projects that are being recommended for a total of $17.1 million. We've applied for these projects with many partners, but those including Montgomery County engineer Paul Gruner, City of Huber Heights, City of Tip City, Tri-Cities, North Regional Wastewater Authority, and the Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disabilities. So those range from infrastructure improvements to wastewater treatment plan upgrades and collection systems, as well as cultural and in our parks. Also on Friday, we had the major wet weather event where typically our wastewater treatment facility takes on about 11 million, 11.2 million gallons. That was a Friday with the rain event. It was a 30-million-gallon day. I reported to you that there was a sanitary sewer line collapse on the 36-inch main that is on Johnson Station. That's what they believe that it was. I stopped down there and talked to Outdoor Enterprises today, the contractor who is performing the emergency repairs. Great news is that the sanitary sewer line that collects all of the wastewater from Tip City and Vandelia did not collapse. What happened is the manhole cover is welded on because during high-flow events, there's pressure that could shoot the manhole up into the air. That actually lifted the entire encasement for the manhole, and what that did is it broke in the weakest point, and then water was discharged, wastewater was discharged out of the road. The repairs are much more minor than what we anticipated, so that's actually good news. And finally, Director Clark has informed me that once again Vandelia's achieved the designation of Tree City USA. So that concludes my information items. As far as action items go... As far as action items go, there, there is a request, let me get over to my part here, Shen's is changing the name that they're doing business as. There is a request to transfer the liquor permit. The Police Division is not requesting or recommending a hearing, and so if that's the, if that's the case, I would just ask, does any action actually have to be taken for that?
You know, we usually make a motion to-
Yeah, somebody will make a motion to approve or deny, and then we go through our-
Approve without a hearing.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll move that we not request an ODLC hearing for the transferance of the liquor permit at 7580 Poe Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do not request a hearing for the liquor transfer at 7580 Poe Avenue. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this, this evening, that being Resolution 23-R-12. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of duty firearms from LEPD at a price of $30,706.22 and declaring the current duty firearms and equipment being replaced as surplus property for trade-in.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the division, the Police Division is scheduled to replace department-issued handguns in 2023. The Division last purchased Sig Sauer firearms in 2007, and this is a capital item that is generally on a 15-year replacement cycle. During 2022, VPD officers were able to test and to evaluate a variety of reputable handguns with various features and provide feedback on the various models tested. The majority of VPD officers selected the FN 509 LE handgun. VPD obtained quotes from two Glock dealers and two FN vendors. LEPD offered the best price for the FN 509 LE handgun and provided a trade-in value for VPD's Sig Sauer handguns, current holsters, and five MP5 submachine guns that are no longer being utilized. For this reason, I recommend that City Council waive competitive bidding for the FN 509 LE duty handguns and options due to the limited vendors, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and to enter into an agreement with LEPD in Columbus to purchase 37 FN 509 LE handguns with the selected options.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-12 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 23-R-12 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-13.
Resolution awarding the bid for the Airport Access Road northbound bridge deck rehabilitation requested by the Public Service Department to Broombaugh Construction at the lowest and best bid price of $360,000.
Mr. Went.
Your Honor, we opened bids on February 9th. Bids ranged from $360,000 to north of $511,000. Engineer's estimate for the project was just over $335,000. We did apply for an Ohio Public Works Commission grant of $200,000. This type of project does not score well in that type of grant, and so we were not awarded. The bridge deck is a constant maintenance problem for crews as it's, has several deteriorated sections that are continuing to get worse. Since we're trying to direct as much commercial vehicle traffic as possible to the Airport Access Road, it's critical that we keep it safe and hazard-free. Therefore, I recommend that we award the contract to Broombaugh Construction in the amount of $360,000 for the project and allow a 10% contingency for items or change orders for a total of $420,000.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-12 with a 10% contingency.
13.
13.
13. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 23-R-13 as presented. Any comments?
I approve that as a second because it is our obligation to repair that bridge and to maintain it, as it is our responsibility to maintain Airport Access Road. But every time I do that with anything to do with that Airport Access Road, it grinds me, specifically because Vandelia has been vested, has the responsibility historically for that Airport Access Road and the bridge. It is principally there to service the city of Dayton, their airport, and is principally there to facilitate the traffic for their development. It brings no specific traffic advantage necessarily to the citizens of Vandelia. And we have heretofore been unsuccessful in negotiating with either the county and specifically the city with their development west. Let them pick up some of this cost, and this is just another example of that. And so with that little diatribe, it causes me a lot of heartburn.
I'm going to chime in there too, because we've had this discussion numerous times over the years. The history on it, and nobody seems to remember how we ever took the responsibility for that access road, but it just, I think in anybody's common sense, it does not make any sense that that has to be our responsibility. So I think we realize it is, but as, as Councilman Lewis said, we've, we've been over this many times. I'm sure if we could figure out some way to offload that, we would, and hopefully in the future, that will happen.
They're going to jump right all on it. All right, any more comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-14.
Resolution awarding the bid for asphaltic concrete requested by the Public Works Department to Valley Asphalt in the amount of $80 a ton for Type 2 asphalt and $85 a ton for Type 1 asphalt as the lowest and best bid.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Bids were open for the annual asphalt purchase for the Public Works Division on February 9th. Two companies submitted bids for the item, recommending awarding the bid to Valley Asphalt as the lowest and best. That's for $80 per ton for base asphalt, $85 per ton for surface course asphalt. The Public Works Division has $45,000 appropriated from the Permissive Tax Fund. Park and Rec has $20,000 appropriated for Castle Hills Golf Course for cart path resurfacing. Of course, if we don't purchase it, we don't spend it, but this asphalt is used for utility repairs and patching potholes and things of the like as well.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-14 as presented.
Circle.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 23-R-14 as presented. Are there any comments or questions from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-15.
A resolution adopting a plan of operation and governance for the city's electrical aggregation program in conjunction with the Miami Valley Communications Council Electric and National Gas Aggregation Program.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This resolution will be adopting the plan of operation and governance for the city's electrical aggregation program in conjunction with the Miami Valley Communications Council Electric and National, Natural Gas Aggregation Program. It's a mouthful.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-15 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 23-R-15 as presented. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-16.
A resolution adopting a plan of operation and governance for the city's natural gas aggregation program in conjunction with the Miami Valley's Communications Council Electric and National Gas Aggregation Program.
All right, thank you, Mr. Went.
This resolution will be adopting a plan of operation and governance for the city's natural gas aggregation program in conjunction with the Miami Valley Communications Council Electric and Natural Gas Aggregation Program.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 23-R-16.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 23-R-16 as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-17.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with the United States Air and Trade Show.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Annually, the sitter enters into a letter of understanding with the U.S. Air and Trade Show. Per the terms of the letter, the city agrees to provide police and other city services and direct support of the 2023 CenterPoint Energy Dayton Air Show being held this year on July 22nd and 23rd. The city will be reimbursed should such services exceed $21,900. I don't anticipate that they will.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-17.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 23-R-17 as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 20, or 23-R-18.
A resolution renaming Veterans Memorial Parkway to Veterans Parkway.
All right, thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Appointed Ad-Hoc Committee has made its recommendation approving the change of the name of the road as requested. This resolution will approve the renaming of Veterans Memorial Parkway to Veterans Parkway.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 23-R-18.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Woods to approve Resolution 23-R-18 as presented. Are there any comments or questions?
I'd like to thank the committee, Ad-Hoc Committee, and (laugh) Councilmember Folick for bringing this up, having served on the original committee, with Councilmember Fars for the naming of Veterans Parkway, and now to, or the memorial to-
A long time ago, yeah.
-recognizing, so I appreciate you doing that.
How long ago was that?
Just a couple of years ago. Just a couple of years ago.
All right. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-19.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Allied Fence Builders of Dayton, Ohio for the Castle Hills Golf Course Split Rail Fence Project in the amount of $26,575.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the Parks and Recreation Department is recommending awarding the bid for the Castle Hills Golf Course Split Rail Fence Project to Allied Fence Builders of Dayton, Ohio as a result of it being overall best proposal for the project. On February 10th, we publicly opened and read proposals received for the project. It was advertised in the Daily Court Reporter as required. The request for proposal encouraged vendors to develop a proposal to provide the necessary equipment, supplies, and labor to complete the perimeter fence project. This includes replacement of the current split rail fencing along Holes 5, 7, 8, as shown on the map, and additional fencing on Hole 5. This is in order to be compliant with our liquor license, the additional fencing on Hole 5. Five companies submitted formal proposals for the project. The 2023 capital project budget includes $40,000 allotted for the project based on a quote that was received. Allied Fence Builders of Dayton submitted the lowest and best proposal for the project at $26,575.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-19 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman, or Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 23-R-19 as presented. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. And finally, with our ninth resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 23-R-20.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to pay for emergency temporary repairs and replacement of a traffic signal mast arm pole and signal heads at Peters Pike in West National Road.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. On February 13th, one of our traffic signals and pole was damaged by a commercial vehicle turning right onto National Road from Peters Pike. Excuse me. Director Cron called her traffic signal contractor, Capital Electric, for emergency repairs. We anticipate that the costs in this resolution totaling $30,566.6 will be covered by the insurance company, and that's all I have to say about that.
All right, can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-20 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 23-R-20 as presented. Are there any comments?
I have one comment. In light of this incident, and since they were turning from Peters Pike, I think there was some thought or concern about perhaps putting some signage on North Peters, indicate not, no, indicating no right turn over a certain length of vehicle. Is that possible?
Yeah, so we've worked with the schools. 19 school buses turn right plus field trips every day from Peters Pike going east on National Road. The maximum school bus length currently is 45 feet, and so looking at vehicles that are potentially longer than that, fire trucks notwithstanding, we're investigating the options right now as to what, what we can do to restrict. We, of course, restricted turning at Dixie and National, and there was an engineering decision behind that, that being the tight turn radius where you can't, you can't make the turn without going into the oncoming traffic, and so that is something that we're looking at pretty seriously, and I, yep, I will, I will update you on that as we continue. Having gone there-
Having gone there soon after that incident happened, it looked like the trailer was longer than the forty-five foot. I mean, it may have been one of the fifty-some foot trailers. It was a long one, so.
Absolutely, and
Got it.
And Carter Express is one of our businesses, and and we have communicated with them in the past that it would be our preference that they would direct their traffic down Airport Access Road, and we'll we'll continue to reiterate that. We have indicated that we're researching the implications of what that prohibition would do and whether whether that's something that we have the authority to do onto the the U.S. Route forty.
Okay, thank you for checking into it.
Yep.
All right, good point. Councilman Blakesley. All right, any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have one ordinance in the first reading, that being Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance amending the city of Vandalia Castle Hills Swimming Pool Fee Schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our staff has done extensive research regarding fee and admission modifications to Castle Hills Pool. The item's been presented at two council study sessions and recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This ordinance will amend the city of Vandalia's Castle Hills Swimming Pool Fee Schedule and operational policy.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance twenty-three zero five in its first reading.
Circle it.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five in its first reading. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no ordinances in the second reading, and that brings us to Emergency Ordinance twenty-three dash zero four. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance approving individual assessments amounts and directing the finance director or her designate to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Your Honor, this emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquent sewer and water, and also weed cutting.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance twenty-three zero four as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folic to approve Ordinance twenty-three dash zero four as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions, and we have a variance requested at eight twenty-five Old Farm Court. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant Lifetime Quality Solar has requested a variance to allow six solar panels on the south-facing roof surface facing the public right-of-way on property located at eight twenty-five Old Farm Court. Per code, roof-mounted solar panels shall not face a street. These solar panels were installed without a permit in early 2022. At its meeting on June eighth, 2022, the Board of Zoning Appeals issued a split vote, two to two. Council tabled this request at its meeting on November twenty-first, 2022 until March sixth, 2023, as staff work to propose revisions to the city's solar panel ordinance. Council requested that the pending solar panel text amendment return to study session, meaning that the amendment has not yet gone through the planning commission process. As such, really, the question is, is in lieu of denial of this variance, would council consider tabling this again? And if so, I would recommend that it be tabled until the June nineteenth meeting, given the timeframe that it will take to get through and become effective, or you have the option to approve or to deny.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we move the pending variance at eight twenty-five Old Farm Court to June the nineteenth.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakesley to table the variance requested at eight twenty-five Old Farm Court and move it to the June nineteenth meeting. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes of October twenty-fourth, 2022, the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes of December fourteenth, 2022, and the Planning Commission meeting minutes of February fourteenth, 2023. Are there any comments regarding those? All right, that brings us to council comments. We'll begin with Mr. McDonald. Thank you. Mr. Went.
No comments, Your Honor.
Are you sure? Well, all right, we're moving on. Councilman Ayers.
Just got back in town, so I don't have any comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fairst.
I have no comments, but I have a question. On the large debris drop-off on Saturday, March eleventh, from eight to two, is that storm debris or is that normal construction debris? Pardon?
Any.
Oh, any.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Refrigerators, air conditioning units.
All right, just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Okay, thank you.
All your junk.
Let's. Councilman Folic.
Yeah, just a few things real quick. First, I had the I attended the Employee Service Awards on February the twenty-fourth. So again, just congratulations to all the city employees who are recognized for their service anniversaries. I think we totaled three hundred and ninety hours or three hundred and ninety years of service between between the group. And I stated that day when I when I had the opportunity to speak to staff that were there, the number of employees that we have that are reaching twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year anniversaries, but then also employees who started here as part-time employees, maybe as teenagers, and have have now served the city in twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year careers. I think it's just remarkable that there are individuals here that have basically grown up working for the city and are some of our more tenured staff on citywide, so congratulations to all of them. Also, just congratulations to Officer Nelson Kleimer and Clark Typus Nancy Mandelik. Am I pronouncing that correctly? I always knew her as Anderson. I didn't realize she got married. But they were both selected as 2022 Employees of the Year in the Division of Police, and I think what's important to point that out is that those are selected by their peers. So I think that both of those individuals were recognized for their commitment and dedication to the division, and especially Officer Kleimer, who I think just got hired by us in 2021.
He was my first hire. Yep.
So that, you know, obviously, he's hit the ground running. Has made quite the impression with his coworkers, so congratulations to him. And then two other things real quick. I had the I was at Optimist Club last week, and the presentation was given by Parks and Rec employees Aaron Messenger and John Myers about Parks and Recreation Special Events. And even though I feel like I'm pretty in tuned with all we offer, when Aaron Messenger spelled everything out that is available special event-wise to Vandalia residents from basically starting now through the end of the calendar year, I mean, it's absolutely amazing, the number of things that we're offering to our residents. And I think if I quoted to quote him correctly, all of them but one are free events. So I think that's phenomenal that we're providing that much special events to our residents. And then same thing with youth athletics. I know John Myers had pointed out that I think in all of our youth athletics, the enrollment numbers are up, so we've got hundreds of of youth participating in our youth athletic leagues, which is great, especially when there's neighboring cities who are closing down their leagues because they just don't have enough interest. So the fact that that's still thriving in Vandalia is great. And the last thing, I just want to give a shout out to Public Works. As I've stated before, I'm a pretty avid user of the My Vandalia app, but on Thursday night, I was coming home from work, and on Webster Street, there was a pothole forming just south of Lurie York, and I pulled up my garage, went on the My Vandalia app, submitted the request, and by twelve noon on Friday morning, I'd gotten an email back that said, "Pothole's been filled and taken care of." And I think every every service request that I've submitted to there, whether it be a deceased animal or a pothole, the response is always very quickly filled by our Public Works Division or whoever's responsible for that service request. So if residents haven't downloaded the My Vandalia app or same thing on, what's it called on the website?
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yep.
You know, those service requests are answered very promptly by city staff, so I would recommend that as a effective tool to communicate with the city. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakesley.
Well, I'm going to echo a couple of things that Council Councilmember Folic said in reference to the luncheon, and call it a longevity knowledge luncheon, because there's three hundred and ninety years of knowledge of these folks in in that group. It's just impressive, and so much talent in the group, and so proud that we have that talent. It does scare me when we don't have that talent anymore. So we're really fortunate to have all the staff and all the jobs that they do and do that well. I, too, have a story with My Vandalia. I recommended to a couple of folks, one near near me, my neighbors, and because they were complaining about potholes, they were complaining about lights, more so the lights, the streetlights. So I got a call the next day, said, "Hey, that worked out pretty good," because the same thing. Within twenty-four hours, they had that answer back that that light was fixed. And so I felt kind of out of the loop now because they don't call me as often, which is okay. So that was one of the reasons, but they were joking with me about that. So I'm glad to see that working to its full extent, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woods.
I just want to say thank you to our community organizations who are helping make contributions towards the emergency AED equipment for the parks. I know I wrote a check from Rotary for twenty-five hundred, and I'm pretty sure my brother, the treasurer of Optimus, is going to do at least the same, and and I just think that that's great that they're stepping up and supporting that.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis.
No comments, other than I'm trying to write a grant for those through Rotary for those AEDs, so hopefully that'll be successful.
All right, well, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and I have no comments myself. It's recommended that council enter into executive session to consider the purchase of real property. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folic to go into executive session. Roll call.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folic to go into executive session. Roll call.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes. That passed seven zero if you're keeping count.